Peter, Karen here.
Nicole Mello, present.
Mark Pacheco, present.
And we have to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'd make a, somebody could make a motion to take our agenda out of order and do executive session at the end of our meeting.
I'll make a motion to recess executive session.
Sure.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Peter, I'm sorry, would you just announce that the meeting is being recorded?
Oh, yeah, you should do it when they come in. This meeting is being recorded. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Now, all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law.
Okay.
Okay, let me. A lot of people out there, or just a lot of cars, I guess?
Reynolds, and the library director.
So we'll go right into a moment of silence, and then announcements. Hi, how are you?
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
We just recessed back from executive session, so we're just gonna go right into the meeting. And the first thing that we're going to do is just please stand for a moment of silence. We lost two residents this week, and we just wanted to acknowledge that we lost them, please. It was Mary Corey and Isabel Pierce. Thank you. Oh, somebody's been to the fire department.
(laughing).
Okay, we had a moment of silence, so we're gonna go right into announcements, please.
The Adult Flu COVID Vaccine Clinic will be held October 18th from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Council on Aging Building located at 1059 Somerset Ave. Online registration is highly encouraged. The Town of Dyton Food Bank will be held next on October 19th, located at Town Hall, 979 Somerset Ave in the lower level. On Saturday, October 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., the Drug Enforcement Administration will coordinate with the Dyton Police Department for a one-day prescription tape-back initiative event to remove potentially dangerous controlled substances from the home. On Monday, October 28th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., there will be a Pumpkin Patio Pot fundraiser for the Dyton Historical Society at Arugio Farms, 1522 Williams Street, $50 per person, and this includes all materials. Please bring your gloves. Pre-registration required, call 508-669-6988. Early voting notice, in-person early voting for November 5th. 2024 state elections will be held at Dyton Town Hall, Saturday, October 19th, 2024, through Friday, November 1st, 2024. See attached flyer for early voting hours. Believe those are on Facebook or on the town page.
Thank you, Nicole. Right into old business, please. Review, discuss, and act. This is the Board of Selectmen holiday meeting schedule. And as I mentioned last week, December 25th, which is our fourth meeting, I mean, our fourth week of the month to have a meeting, is Christmas. So my suggestion was we meet on the 11th, and we could do the 18th unless there is nothing to do. Unless you guys wanna skip the 18th and just do the 11th. If you guys have a preference, I don't care.
So we were already scheduled for the 18th, correct?
No, we're scheduled for the 11th.
Oh, were we? Okay. Is there any way to do the 18th instead of the 11th?
Instead of the 11th? Absolutely, we can, we're at the liberty to change it now.
Okay.
I just wanted everybody to have enough advance notice.
Oh, wait, never mind, sorry. Nope, wrong stuff. I have too many select boards that are on here that aren't all us.
Sure.
So no, the 11th was fine. The 18th, if we were gonna add that, I couldn't attend that.
You couldn't attend that? Okay. So you wanna keep it the 11th?
If possible.
Mark, do you have a preference?
I don't. Should we keep it as a placeholder, just in case something comes up, and we hope maybe...
Absolutely. I know you can't make it, Nicole.
Yeah, but if you two could still, if you needed to.
Okay, so we'll keep it as a placeholder. So is there a motion on the floor to do that, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the holiday meeting, the meeting schedule, and keep December 18th as a placeholder.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Onto new business. Recommendation to appoint Laura Reynolds as circulation librarian. Hi, Mark.
Hello.
How are you?
How are you?
I'm doing excellent, thank you.
All right.
We got your letter.
Okay.
And it seems pretty straightforward.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have anything you wanna add?
No, I just wanna say that we got, it was 22 applicants for the position.
Wow.
Karen and Leanne in the selectmen, I was gonna attest to that.
Yep.
Which is great, 'cause you want a very deep pool of applicants.
Sure.
And then you know you're gonna be selecting from qualified applicants that you really wanna have. But then, when you have to make that selection, it's really tough, 'cause you're selecting from really, really qualified, top-notch applicants. So we're excited to hire Laura. We had it at the trustee meeting last week, they approved it, and so we're just, we're here before all of you know.
Okay. I have no questions for you. I do wanna tell you again, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
I don't know how many times we can say it, but you're a breath of fresh air for everyone here.
Well, thank you very much.
Is there a motion on the floor, unless you guys have discussions?
I don't, but we're excited. That's fantastic. I'll make a motion to appoint Laura Reynolds to the position of circulation librarian.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Yes. Yeah.
You don't have to stay, it gets pretty boring from here.
(laughing).
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Bye.
Bye.
Last time I saw them, they were running around naked in the yard.
(laughing). Oh, God.
Again, new business. Review, discuss, and act. Recommendation on special town meetings, meeting articles. Like Jim said, we don't have to read each article, but I do have the recommendations from the finance committee here. So if we wanna start, we can just go right into it. Article one is pretty straightforward. Article two is paying last year's bills for the fire department, and the board of, the finance committee's recommendation was to take it from free cash.
Where is my thing?
I don't know if you guys have any questions that I can answer, or Jim, but it has to be paid.
We did hear the presentation last, it's your meeting last week, Mr. Chairman, which I thought was very useful for, you know, for all the presenters. But yeah, that's an unpaid bill, and I think in my office today, I use the term, you know, please take this stone out of my shoe.
Yeah.
For whoever's right and for whoever's wrong, there's a debt owed, you know, let's pay it and move on.
Yep.
I have a question. As we go through this, are we gonna motion accept or not accept as we go, or how, I don't know why I can't remember the process we've done in the past.
I don't know what question I mean.
Like, 'cause we're gonna accept them to the, to town meeting, correct?
Correct. Right now, they're not on town meeting until we approve it here.
Right, so are we gonna go through each one and approve them, or just...
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Or not.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
So we said article two, we should, we should stop, we should make a motion for that.
Correct.
Well, start with article one, right?
Oh, right, I'm sorry.
Even though it's spoiler, but we still have to...
Okay. Article one, to hear the reports of town officials. Is there a motion on the floor?
So I make a motion to accept article one for our town meeting?
Yep.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, vote to recommend.
Okay. I make a motion to recommend article one for town, special town meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article two, this is a raise inappropriate, again, to pay last year's bill for the fire department, police department, and the finance committee's recommendation that it come from free cash.
I'll make a motion to recommend article two as presented, and for us, for the Board of Selectmen to recommend it comes from free cash.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article three, this is a raise inappropriate as well.
Free cash, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, for free cash.
I'll make a motion that we recommend article three as presented for town meeting from free cash.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article four, this is again, a, coming from the ambulance fund.
Let's do every other one. So I'll make a motion to recommend article four as presented, and to recommend it to come from the ambulance fund.
Okay, what was that? Okay.
Is there a second?
No, sorry, I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article five?
I'll make a motion to recommend article five as presented for town meeting from free cash.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article six is a lengthy one.
Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, the treasurer-collector suggested that there had been a prior town meeting appropriation made for these purposes.
Correct.
And our research proved that to be correct, in the amount of $150,000. So two things happened. Serena represented us last night at the FinCom meeting. The overall request of $1,355,000 has been reduced. The finance committee recommended $1.2 million, $1,050,000 coming from capital stabilization, and $150,000 from the aforementioned town meeting article appropriation.
Did they say why they want to reduce it?
So Peter Roach, Peter Roach had done his own research.
Right.
And he compared other comparable towns, and he felt that that would be more in line with what we are looking for in this town. Like, we don't need the feasibility study to, you know, for example, look at 10 different properties.
Sure.
We're just gonna concentrate on the one property where the school already is, and there was other factors that he took into account that he felt the 1.2 million would be sufficient.
I saw what he did, and not every town can be compared to another town just because they're like towns. My concern was that if the superintendent and the building committee had discussed this...
We did.
And they came up with that figure for a reason. And just because they don't have to look at multiple sites, I don't know if that's a valid reason not to give the superintendent what he's looking for.
Yeah, so that was the decision of the FinCom made.
Okay.
Yep.
What's your opinion on that, Mark?
Well, that was another thing. We had a higher number, the committee, and it was reduced down to the 1.355 million.
Right.
And the committee was just very cautious of, we were so scared of having to go back to town meeting. So we thought that this was a number that could achieve the needs of a feasibility study, but it wasn't over the top, you know? It was, it was kind of like the happy medium. This 1.2 million, I think, might cut it a little close.
Yep. I don't want them to have to come back.
That's a fear.
And if there's leftover funds, it can always come back into stabilization. I don't know how you feel about that?
No, I feel, I feel the same way. I wouldn't want them to have to come back. And I just don't feel like that's enough information, Peter's research, to make me feel comfortable with that.
One of the dangers, I don't wanna get off topic, of just comparing ourselves to other towns, as you know, here, everything is different. So you just can't take one town and say, well, we're gonna copy them, or because they have a nurse and we don't, there's so many variables that it scares me when we just take towns and compare them and say, this is what it should be. If Mark thinks that they came up with a 3.5, 1.355 for a reason, and they were originally going to ask for more than that, I find that the superintendent probably did his homework, and it should be at the 1.355 million.
Right. So because the town, and this wasn't part of our discussion as the committee, this 150,000, so to the article to be warranted, like, let's say it's 1.20, 1,205,000? Is that what that's supposed to be?
1.2 million even.
Yep.
So then, in the motion, when we, so if you, if the Board of Selectmen was to agree at the 1.2 million, the motion would just have two separate funding sources when it's read.
Right, one stabilization and...
In the operating budget.
Right.
And he did say that he looked at towns like they're comparable per Kappa.
So if we, at a prior town meeting, we've already appropriated 150,000?
Mm-hmm.
So if we kept the 1.355 million that the committee recommended, we have to raise an additional 1.205 million, 1,205,000?
So...
Like, forgetting the FinCom.
Right, I see what you're saying.
Like, so 1.355 million minus 150,000, like, that was appropriated before?
Oh, I was, yeah, okay.
So then, so the difference for that is $1,205,000?
Right.
That is math.
That's the math. So does an article have to be changed a little bit if we, if we wanna, we do wanna, let's say we wanna raise the 1.355, do we have to acknowledge at all that we've appropriated 150,000 to it already?
So the Board of Selectmen's role is not to really recommend the funding sources, it's just, are you recommending this article to be on the warrant?
Right, and for what figure? Are we recommending it to be?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the FinCom, as the Board of Selectmen always meet the day of...
Right.
Just before the meeting. So the finance committee did say that if there were differences, you know, they would meet again and decide to agree with, you know, the selectmen's recommendation, like this, you know, is different, or if they're gonna keep their stance at their dollar amount, and then it would just go to the residents.
And it goes to the town floor.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a motion on the floor then, please?
I'll make a motion to recommend article six at the 1.355 million. And I need help with what accounts are coming out of.
We don't have to do that.
Don't have to do that. All right, you were clear on that, I'm sorry.
Motion made, is there a second now?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article seven, this is a raise inappropriate.
Oh, I would like to make a motion to recommend article seven to town meeting as presented.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article eight, again, this is a raise inappropriate.
I'll make a motion to recommend article eight as presented for a raise inappropriate.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article nine, this is gonna be a placeholder, correct, Jim?
I guess, Mr. Chairman.
I would like to make a motion to recommend article nine currently as a placeholder to town meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 10, again, a raise inappropriate and/or transfer from available funds.
So for number 10, the finance committee recommended to use free cash.
Right.
So I would agree with free cash, so I'll make a motion to recommend article 10 as presented and to be funded by free cash.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We don't have to say that it's gonna be funded from free cash, we're just deciding whether it goes on the warrant or not.
Yeah, you said that, and I keep forgetting.
It's okay.
So, thank you.
You have the right to.
I gotta know.
Article 11.
10 now, I think.
Oh, 10, I'm sorry. No, we just did 10.
Okay, don't listen to me.
I'll make a motion to recommend article 11 as presented for town meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 12, this is again, a raise inappropriate or transfer.
I'll make a motion to recommend article 12 as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we have article 13, which was changed to 8,000 at the meeting, but Mark has a proposal that you wanna speak of?
Sure. One cool idea that we may wanna consider is, this is a large sum of money, $8,000, perhaps as a, we're gonna put our skin in the game, the taxpayer's skin, right, for this, for this money? Perhaps we can make it a smaller amount, subject to the committee, the anniversary committee raising magic funds, so like a challenge grant almost.
Sure.
So let's say it was $3,000 or $4,000, and the town will fund it, subject to them raising those funds as well, matching.
Right, matching. So if you raised $1,000, we would give you $1,000. If you raised $4,000, or up into whatever amount is decided here, we would give you that amount. But you have to basically put your skin in the game and say, we're going to raise so much money, or a certain amount of money, that will match that certain amount of money.
Can I come up there to answer you? Can I just answer from here?
No, you can come up.
Okay.
For recording purposes, thank you.
Okay. So we're on board to raise as much money as we can, volunteer, get sponsors, like-kind exchanges, and we're on board to do that for a lot of events, get grants and so forth. The problem we have is that the 13th Continental Congress with the Rehoboth Minutemen, which will be putting on the October 2026 weekend event, needs a commitment from us for $8,000 in February of 2025. So between now and 2026, I'd take that challenge, but I don't know that we can raise $4,000 by February. That's the problem, it's that deadline. If they would give us until, whatever, you know, longer through next summer even, maybe, I think we could raise it, absolutely.
Worst-case scenario is you don't raise it, what happens?
I don't know, because according to Rich Gunther, who's kinda handling that for us, when he goes to that big main board, they won't commit to us if we haven't guaranteed the monies in place.
Okay.
So our discussion at the committee, what I thought, well, we have until October 2026 to raise the money, so...
Right.
Let's, I'm with you, let's take a chance, I think we could do it. But then I said, well, wait, I'm on the committee, so who's gonna have to pay it if we don't? You know, if we, if we as a committee commit to that, and then we can't raise it, and we've already, you know, what are they gonna charge us if we book them, and they pass up another opportunity because, and then we cancel? I have no idea what the cancellation fee is. So that's our only problem. I mean, we had a lot of events planned that, and totally understand the position that we're all in, we're in it with you, in the same position.
Right.
But for planning purposes, that was, that's why we brought it right down to the 8,000, which was the bare minimum. So if you have a recommendation as to, I don't work for the town, so I'm on this committee, so if you have a recommendation as to, go ahead, go for it.
Yep.
And I won't have to pay for it if I commit to it.
Okay.
Then, you know, whatever you recommend.
Let's do this. Do you have an opinion onto what that figure should be?
I think if we did it up to 4,000, and, so we matched up to four, and they raised up to four, it'd get to the eight.
Because of the 8,000.
I understand the timeline would absolutely be a challenge.
Yes.
Hopefully, if they saw that the town had a warrant article, and we will, we are optimists, and we expect to get there.
So we plan to start our fundraising in January, because we're this close to the holidays and stuff, so...
I'd start it earlier.
Yeah.
You got to make a decision by February.
Right, right.
I'd start tomorrow.
Right.
Well, I know you don't meet until December, but I'd start right away.
Right.
Yep.
Yep, okay, if that's...
Nicole, do you have an opinion?
I was thinking 4,000 would be the most, and then they would match, or whatever they get, maybe they get over that, I'm being overzealous, but yeah, 4,000 is about the most.
So we're gonna, we're gonna make the article on the town warrant, and we're gonna change the 30,000 that you have here to 4,000.
Okay.
And you'll have to raise through donations the other 4,000.
So does that mean if the town votes, we get the 4,000, or do we have to do dollar for dollar?
Dollar for dollar.
Dollar for dollar, okay.
So if you only raise 2,000, then you'll get 2,000.
We get 2. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your volunteer and your service to the town, we appreciate you, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order, in a motion, just for the record, if you're gonna move the $4,000 amount, include the term challenge grant.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to recommend article 13 to change the amount to the sum of $4,000 as a challenge grant on a dollar-for-dollar basis.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, no, that's it, I'm sorry, all set.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Article 14, this is a raise inappropriate or transfer from available funds as well. I understand the finance committee is recommending this, but we have given them, the police department, a new vehicle every year, so that would be giving them two this year, because they just got one in, and we gave them one in the spring as well. Do we think that they need two vehicles this year?
I think that this could possibly wait till annual town meeting. There are other departments that could have put similar things on here, but with our financial stance and knowing that potentially there could be loss of personnel, they decide not to, and I think that, right now, personnel are more important in that we revisit this. I do think it's important, I've seen their schedule, I like how they schedule it out, because police vehicles are very different than other vehicles, you can't just look at mileage or this or that.
Right.
I mean, those things are running all the time, they do run out a lot quicker than a regular vehicle. But I just think, right now, it's not the time to be spending that money, and definitely look at it for annual town meeting, once we have a better understanding of what's gonna happen with the vote.
I understand that. Mark?
This is a tough one. I just wanna be a man of my word, and I told the chief I would support this, and I was just on my own, and I just know that the chief, you know, there's been some procurement issues with their vehicles, and we do have a new chief and a new deputy chief, and although they're new to their positions, they've been in the town for a while, and I know they know our fiscal situation, and I wanna see them have the tools they need. I do get, it's a timing issue, and generally, they get one car, and it's at the annual and generally they get one car, and it's, it's at the annual town meeting. Um, I'm happy to see that it could be funded by free cash, so I'd like to see it stay on.
I'd like to see it stay on. Um, what we can have is stay on, and, um, it could be that the selectmen don't recommend, is that how it would go?
No.
No?
If you don't recommend, then it's not.
That doesn't go on at all, okay.
That doesn't mean we don't all have to agree, so you guys
No.
we could still go through the voting process and.
And another point too is, we could recommend to put it on, and if something changes from now in the fourteenth, it doesn't mean any of us have to make the motion, I know other folks at town meeting could, as well.
Make the motion that, um, at the floor.
Generally, we make the motion, see, I know someone else could, um, we could always.
All right, is there a motion on the floor then?
I'll make a motion to recommend Article Fourteen as presented.
Is there a second? I'll sit down in his chair and make a, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay.
I do wanna say, I feel really bad opposing it, but.
Yeah, no, it happens.
All right. Um, I know it's important, fire and safety is one of the top priorities, but it was a hard, hard sell for me right now.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Uh, Fifteen, this is from the OPOY, OPOY settlement, OPEB settlement.
Um, I'd like to make a motion, um, to recommend Article Fifteen to special town meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article Sixteen.
I'll make a motion to place Article Sixteen as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article Seventeen.
Oh, um, I'd like to make a motion to recommend Article Seventeen as presented to special town meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
So, you're saying as presented?
Oh, it doesn't have a dollar amount.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
As a placeholder?
Um, so FinCom suggested thirty thousand to stabilization, thirty to capital, and thirty to OPEB?
So I would like to, can I change my motion?
Sure.
Um, I'd like to make a motion, um, to recommend this Article Seventeen with thirty thousand to stabilization account to special town meeting.
I'll second on discussion, I just have some, a question. How does, how does FinCom make their determination on a percentage? This is the percentage of total available free cash, it looks like it's pretty close, but actually not at all, no. So how does that work?
So they left seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen to vote last.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then we figured out how much was left in free cash.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which came out to like five hundred and ninety thousand at that point, so then we took the ninety thousand and divided it by three, because I am really concerned to have a really, um, sufficient holdback for free cash, just not knowing what the deexclusion vote is gonna be. Um, so with that, that left a available free cash of five hundred thousand, which is a little lower than I wanted it to be, um, but they put, um, some things through free cash that I wasn't expecting, so that's how we got to the thirty thousand for the three of them.
So if we have half a million sitting in free cash, is that an account that it can sit there indefinitely?
Yes.
So we don't have to vote to move it to a different account?
Nope. It just stays in the unreserved fund balance.
In the year-end, it rolls over and becomes part of the, um, the newly certified free cash. It, it rolls forward into the following years, um, a free cash calculation.
Yeah, so it doesn't get lost if we don't do something with it.
Stays in the bank.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, just, you know, before you deliberate, I, I apologize for, for buttoning, but preservation of free cash, you know, with an uncertain outcome on, uh, on the 5th, I think is, is imperative.
Right. Worst-case scenario is, it doesn't pass, and we'll know going into the fourteenth what the situation is.
Precisely.
So we can modify this on the floor.
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, just to go back to Nicole's question about the police car, uh, if we don't get it and we have to cut, we can do that?
Yes.
Having had a conversation with the police chief, uh, when his article was submitted, he does understand that.
Okay. You, uh, understand what I mean, Nicole?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is half a million dollars in free cash historic? Do you know, like, generally what do we have sitting in there? Is that like something that we should be happy with, or is that cutting it really fit?
Um, I, I think it's low, um, free cash certification came in significantly lower to begin with this year from closing the books. Um, so five hundred, I mean, I'm okay with five hundred, but it is definitely on the lower end. Um, you know, if, I haven't heard of any plans of, if the deexclusion doesn't pass, what we're gonna do, um, but I would imagine if we did have layoffs, you know, we have to pay out vacation, maybe a separation package.
Right.
Nobody has used their vacation time, you know, it's really early in the fiscal year.
Right.
Um, I haven't expensed any of that out, but, um, that's gonna be a big chunk of change if that is the route that end up needs to be done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we need a new motion for Article Seventeen.
And.
To see if the town will vote to, or, to transfer from available funds a sum of not to exceed thirty thousand to the stabilization account.
Oh, I thought I just did that, no?
I don't think you had the figure in there.
Oh, okay.
You did.
Oh, I did.
Oh, you put it in there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
With an amount of thirty, right?
And I seconded it, so we just all have to vote.
Uh, motion made and seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article Eighteen.
I'll make a motion to place Article Eighteen on the special town meeting in the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article Nineteen.
I would like to make a motion to place Article Nineteen as presented to special town meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
I have a question. Is as presented in your packet, say ninety or thirty?
Says ninety.
So, do you wanna change it to thirty?
The Finance Committee's recommended thirty.
Oh, wait, do we wanna have discussion on that?
Sure.
So nine, other post-employment benefits liability trust fund, where do we stand as percent funding? Like, are we, we start cutting way back to thirty thousand, is that kind of?
Um, so there is thirty thousand in the operating budget that gets voted within, um, the annual budget every year, and then typically we, you know, do ninety out of free cash. Um, I think the last time it was evaluated, they said that we, for our population and our budget, that we were contributing, um, above average for the other communities in the same situation. I don't know if, Jim, if you've had any discussion with Paul, with OPEB since you've been here?
I have not.
Yeah, I, I think last year, um, the agency that does it, it's not UniBank.
Buck Associates, the actuaries.
Yeah, the actuaries.
The, the actuaries who do these calculations, uh, the, you know, the big group, uh, uh, that generally does it is, is called Buck, B-U-C-K, uh, uh, Associates. I'm not suggesting that, you know, that this is a result of their work, but, uh, they're obliged by law to do an actuarial analysis every two years.
Two years, yeah, and that's through the treasurer's office, so I don't really have a say in that, but I do remember them saying that we were contributing, you know, a good amount over the years.
Yeah, there was some discussion about that, I don't know why.
Last year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was.
It's all coming back to me.
And that's something, you know, at the same time, if the deexclusion does pass, we can bump it back up to ninety at the day of the meeting.
Okay, so I'd like to change my motion, um.
I have another dumb question, if you don't mind. If we fund these things at, like, thirty thousand, would, could this affect our credit rating, our, our rating?
Um, the OPEB, I think it slightly does, yeah.
Um, even a thirty thousand dollar contribution, um, uh, uh, is a positive.
Okay.
Um, we're not playing to the feds as much as we are, uh, the financial markets.
Mm-hmm.
And when the financial markets see a consistent effort, okay, um, it seems you've got, you know, perhaps an unwritten policy of, you know, you want, um, like a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars or so net, uh, uh, contributed to it on an annual basis, and you, you know, you've been making contributions, uh, when the, uh, when the markets, if you've ever sat to a rating, uh, uh, session, it's pretty exciting stuff, but if I got anything.
Yeah.
Um, but even a, even a thirty thousand dollar contribution, when they know your back is against the wall, it shows, uh, commitment and consistency, okay?
Awesome.
How much does it, it's a positive impact on your total credit rating exercise, okay? How much, you know, is, uh, I, I, is open for debate, there are so many factors involved in that, but it is indeed a positive. So thirty thousand is better than zero.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Right, so I'd like to change my motion, I would like to make a motion to recommend Article Nineteen with the dollar amount of thirty thousand, um, to special town meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, Article Twenty is not, um, bothered with the Finance Committee.
It's not a money article per se, Mr. Chairman, but it was submitted by the, uh, by the Board of Ass, uh, of assessors.
I would like to make a motion to recommend Article Twenty as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article Twenty-one.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend Article Twenty-one as presented to special town meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everyone's hustling to try and have that ready for November fourteenth, Mr. Chairman, Article Twenty-one.
Article Twenty-two.
Um, I will make a motion to recommend Article Twenty-two for the special town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article Twenty-three, um, this was quite extensive, which I read last time, but I'm not gonna read it again this time.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to recommend Article Twenty-three as presented to special town meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, where's Article Twenty-four? Page?
Page four.
At the very bottom of the page.
Twenty-three.
Very bottom of page four, Mr. Chairman.
Article Twenty-four.
So, just at the last meeting, I mentioned for them to s, put strike-throughs for any changes, 'cause they print in black and white?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's not, that's not for you. So I would just make a motion to recommend it, um, contingent upon the conservation commission, um, resubmitting it with strike-throughs for any changes, and what date would you need that by, Karen?
By the twenty-third.
By the, by October twenty-third.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Just, uh, uh, before you move on to the next one, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, we've got it in the form that you
Oh, nice.
as it you speak of, we didn't present it to you tonight, I apologize for that.
Even better, that's great.
It's done, yeah, it is done.
Good.
Okay, Article Twenty-five.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend Article Twenty-five as presented to special town meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that makes, um, the school zone for, which can now go to twenty miles an hour, correct?
That's my understanding, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Article Twenty-six.
Sorry, I just gotta look at it.
Sure.
Um, I'll make a motion to recommend Article Twenty-six as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then Article Twenty-seven.
I'll make a motion to accept Article Twenty-seven as presented to special town meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then Article Twenty-eight.
I'll make a motion to recommend Article Twenty-eight as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chairman, could I beg the Board's indulgence under, um, under public input number seven?
Sure.
Uh, it's no surprise, uh, that there was no town administrator's report printed, since I haven't given one in the last two, uh, uh, meetings, um, but, um, uh, there is a, um, there is a statement that I'd love to make, if, uh, if you don't mind. Um, we are twenty-nine days from, after town meeting. Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, you have one more regularly scheduled meeting, uh, before the posting of the warrant on, on the thirty-first, uh, of this week. So in terms of, you know, any wording or conflicts or, uh, or anything like that, you know, you've got a, you've got a cleanup date.
One more month, I mean, one more week.
Uh, yes, uh, uh, available to you. So, um, so we feel pretty good about the, uh, you know, you know, the scheduling and the performance of the department heads and yourself and the FinCom, uh, uh, in getting this package ready as we're in a transition, uh, in, uh, in an administrative, uh, transition mode. And, um, uh, I will say, with respect to the transition, uh, we had the, uh, the incoming town administrator here for about four-plus hours, uh, uh, yesterday. Um, we gave him a lot, uh, uh, of information, uh, myself, Karen, and Lian, uh, and, um, uh, in spite of that, he still plans on coming on Monday, uh, to, uh, uh, to be here, so, um, so that part of the transition is, uh, uh, is in order. Um, I just wrote something up here this afternoon, Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like it, you know, for the record, um, that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank you and the select board members, um, uh, Nicole Melo and Mark Pacico for the opportunity to serve the town of Dayton. Uh, from the onset of my service on June seventeenth till now, uh, there's been a palpable feeling of mutual respect between us. Uh, in looking back, we've accomplished a great deal, I think, in that, uh, in that period of time. Uh, I'd like to, uh, also offer, sounds like church, but, uh, uh, thanks and praise to Karen Brady and Lian Kerwin for their dedication, loyalty, and hard work. Uh, their competencies are on a par with the very best officers I've worked with, uh, uh, over, uh, my many years in public service. They're always loyal to the town's interests, uh, and they treat your customers, uh, town staffers and members of Dayton's boards and commissions with respect, uh, and I value their friendship. Uh, and, uh, finally, my thanks to Dayton's competent workforce, uh, and the legion of citizen volunteers that populate its boards and commissions, and best of luck moving forward. Tomorrow is my last day, this is my last select board meeting in Dayton, so.
Thank you.
It's, uh, it's gone by so fast, and, uh, I don't know how you say that.
Last couple of weeks, having to my house. You know, the closer you get, the more anxious, you know.
Oh, sure.
The more anxious you get.